Okay, welcome everyone. This is our regular September 6th Milbury Elementary School District General Meeting. Good evening, everyone. Can we please stand for the flag salute? Can I have Leo Advisor Lion Michael Kelly lead us in the pledge?
Thank you so much, everybody. I've got our club president, John McCurchan. He is stepping forward in blue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, announcements. This meeting is being televised and recorded for the transcriptions of the minutes. At this time, speakers wishing to address the board this evening should turn in the completed speaker cards to the board secretary. We'll now report on action taken in closed session. There was no action taken in closed session. Okay? Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda today? Motion by trustee Chin?
Second to none.
Second by trustee Musa. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, we now have some people in the audience tonight. We have the Milbury Lions Leo Club with their director or advisor. And we also have the MEF here tonight. We're going to ask the Milbury Lions Leos Club to come up and present to us.
Thank you very much, everybody. Oh, there we go. My name is Michael Kelly. I'm proud and privileged to be a Leos advisor. I've been in the Lions Club for about five years. I've been working with our Leos for about three. And we were asked to present so the school district can understand the impact that the Leos are having on the community and in particular, the schools. We're thrilled with the opportunity. You can see, we've got very good representation tonight. And we've got several board members here, including our club president, John McCurchan. Actually, would all board members stand for a moment, please? Good.
Hi, my name is Joey Situ and I'm the Internal Secretary.
Hi, I'm Ethan Lau and I'm the membership director.
Hello, I'm Ronald Wen and I'm the vice president.
Hi, I'm Warren Shuen. I'm the budget director.
Hello, I'm Spencer. I'm the external secretary.
Hello, I'm John McCurtician and I am the president of Milbury Leos Club.
Fantastic. So, one of the things that I'll just make brief mention of, the success of the Leos we've determined is because they've become a self-governing body. They have their own decision-making process. The advisors just guide and once they've landed on a plan, we help them lay out how they're going to execute it. But they do the work. They come up with the goals and they set them and they execute around them. And what we've done is modified a presentation that we made for Taylor Middle School last year. We worked with Principal Rob Slosson to come in and present at the eighth grade assembly on one of the Fridays. It was fantastically successful. There was 200 or so eighth graders sitting still mostly for about 45 minutes, coming up, doing TikTok dance challenges and understanding what the Leos have done. About a dozen Taylor students came in to our next meeting. We've got Taylor representation here.
Hi, my name is Nathan Lau and I'm in seventh grade.
How long have you been a Leo?
I've been a Leo for about 10 months.
About 10 Taylor students that are Leos. The age to become a Leo is 12, so seventh and eighth graders can join. One of the benefits is as they come into high school, most of the students are at Mills, but we've got Sarah represented in St. Ignatius and some at Cap. But the ones coming to Mills, they already have a crew. They're waiting for them. They have this friendly transition into high school. It's fantastic. So with that, we're going to share the deck. Each one of these Leos is going to contribute and present. We know there's about a 14-minute window. We're going to try and get this done. In the deck, there are three one-minute videos. We factored that into the time. So we're going to have President John lead the way.
Hello, we are the Milbury Leos Club. And we are a community service club. We are a community service club and we give opportunity to the youth to volunteer in the community that they're born and raised in. So as Lion Michael said, we have, most of our members are from Mills, from Taylor. So people are all connected. Everybody's having fun. And so therefore, Leos stands for Leadership, Experience, Opportunity, Service. And these are some of the events that we volunteer at. We help, we help the Lions with many events. We, many events that happen in Milbury. We, we always want to help out because not only is it fun, but we're also helping the community. But one of our, one of our main, our main events is the plastic recycling parties that happen right here, actually. I think we're looking for a new location right now. Yeah. So basically, what we've done is we partner with Trex, who first we collect plastic from all around Milbury. We drive it off to, our partner was Safeway, who collected the plastic. And they sent it off to Trex where they would mold benches for the city of Milbury. And we've installed about, I think, seven benches around Milbury. We have one at Spur Trail behind Taylor, Josephine Wa Park, and then all throughout the Spur Trail. And we have 11 more in transit. So we've collected about 8,000 pounds of plastic. And yeah. This way, we're also, we're also connected with the Milbury community because they're, they're helping us. They, they are the main cause that we can, we are able to, we are able to make these benches. So they've, they're making benches for themselves, basically.
Yeah, we have a video. So as I mentioned, there's three short videos. Hopefully, we've got enough audio. Everyone's being great with being quiet, but the speaker system is a little bit limited in here.
It feels good to kind of give back to the community. And because we do a lot of stuff that help out with the city events, such as the Arts and Wine Festival, the Japanese Culture Festival. If you have a plastic work party, that's just, it feels nice to make an environmental impact on the community as a whole, yeah.
An individual should become a Leo because they can explore many opportunities to help the community, serve others, and also to get guided by a great leaders that will help you succeed. There is a very supportive community within the Leos because we are all supporting each other and building others up so that we can help the community even more.
Nice little video, that's nothing too long. And we're just very proud of what the Leos did. They made, they made these videos in collaboration with MCTV and it was a really cool project. Coming next. You can point to the screen here if you want.
Yeah, so, I'm modern Spencer again. And so we get a lot of awards for our service that we do, but it's not really about the awards because we just want to help the community. But, but some of the awards we won were like, Leos Call of the Year. We won that two years in a row, trying to go for a three, a repeat. And we got the, the San Mateo, I think, school county. They gave us an award for, for the plastic benches, which I thought was pretty cool. And they gave us a cash reward.
We also got the Presidential Volunteer Gold Service Award. And with that, we got a letter from the president directly and he signed it, recognizing us for the work that we do.
Not only do we work hard at the events that we do, such as the Arts and Wine, Japanese Culture Festival and Chinese Culture Festival, we also have a lot of fun days, as in work hard, play hard. So in some videos, some photos we have here, we've gone to K-1 Speed as a group and gone to Great America. And at both of those events, and we've had more, such as movie nights and bowling days. At movie night, we rented out a whole theater just to watch Fantastic Beasts, I believe. So that was a lot of fun. And just being a Leo doesn't, also requires working hard, but we also have a lot of having fun.
And like, most of the time, and most of the time, all we want to do is just have fun because of all we did for the community. So we can like, just relax for a bit and have fun.
Nice reward.
Some fun activities are like events that we go to, like the K-1 racing and Great America.
It makes me feel like I have like a stronger bond with them because I have an excuse to see them outside of school and I get to talk to them more and socialize. Hanging out with my friends really gives me more motivation and it just makes it a more pleasing experience when you're doing it with friends. I just think it's really nice being a Leo, having connections with everybody and creating a new community.
I'm Ethan. I'm the membership director and well, my job is to bring in new members and register them. So through this QR code and our website, you can join the Leos. Well, I think all of you are quite old for that. If any of you have kids from like the ages of 12 to 18, they can join us through our website. And with, with the $80 fee, you, you get a shirt, a hoodie, and also a name tag. And yeah, that's basically it. And with, with your application, we, I registered all the members in our master roster. And Secretary Spencer or Secretary Jay, they register the, each Leo in the, in LCI, which logs everyone's hours.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, in the recent year or year or two, we've had an amazing growth in Leos. And it's been, it's been great because we are able to participate in so many more events and just help out the community so much more. And yeah.
I think Leos are really ready to help on the community because we all live in Milbury and we all want to see Milbury thrive. It's just a collective feeling that we have after we do these events.
Some benefits as to being a member of the Leos Club is awards, such as the presidential award from the White House that we got.
We have meetings every month that discuss what we'll be planning on doing for the following month. Just help out with the, with the city events.
Since everybody's become more of a family together, since they've been in the Leos together for a while, they've created new bonds with each other.
I like having fun with getting together instead of just staying home because of the pandemic.
Honestly, I just like the feeling that I'm actually helping.
As a Leo, I'd also like to see my community thrive.
A couple slides left as we wind it down. Ronald?
Hello, everyone. I'm Vice President Ronald Wen. So is the mic working? Hello. All right. So part of the wonderful things about being a Leo as part of the Milbury Leos Club is being able to volunteer with your friends and also attend fun days with them. As doing just hard volunteering work by yourself and not really knowing anyone is painful and you might not want to do it. But being able to motivate yourself by doing it with friends really helps that. And last year, when I was a general member, I really helped a lot with the general member growth. I think I was pretty sure like the leading person in the amount of like invites to my friends because I really wanted to see the club grow and thrive. And inviting my friends also helped me motivate to do more of it. And one of the systems I created prior to being the vice president for this current service year is the buddy system, where I designed it with the past board from last year on how when a new Leo joins, we will have a current existing Leos who has a lot of experience paired up with them through this spreadsheet I made with the past vice president, Mark. And basically, their task as a senior Leo, as we, as we call it, is that they will possibly, or they will communicate with them either by text or in person through meetings or events. And they will welcome them to the club. They will introduce them to other Leos. They'll guide you through events. They will answer, they will answer questions and more importantly, just welcome them into the club and make it a wonderful experience for them to be part of the club. And it's something that I will really put forward to more in this year. And I'm wishing to make it thrive and make it something that we can all rely on to make the club even more enjoyable to be in. And Yeah, so as part of the joining the Leos Club, you have to get a buzz cut. I'm just kidding. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like that at all. Very friendly environment, very supportive.
Yeah, thank you. I'll pass it on back to Lion Michael.
Did somebody want to speak about the raffle? We're just on the second to last slide.
So basically, at meetings, at general meetings, we have raffles at the end of each meeting. And to get raffle entries, you get one for being at the meeting and one for every event. And some events, we have multipliers, such as a double, triple, or quadruple. And those are for like the really special events, such as upcoming. We have the bake sale and the 4C4. Yeah, okay. And like the big event. And so we get, we have prizes such as cash, like, and we're looking to incorporate different items, such as like AirPods or like everyday things that our, our Leos can use.
Notice on that wheel, there's more than one name up there. So many of the Leos go to so many events, they get extra entries. Everything they do, you bring in a new member, extra entry. So there's a lot of incentive that way. But I do want to just make a couple of quick calls out. Lion, Leo Ronald personally brought in 10 new members last year. Was recognized by Lions Club International. Yeah. He was awarded for that. And as we kind of wind down to our last page here, last screen, we invite everyone, anyone that's got school-age children, any school administrators. We are open, welcome to join our third Tuesday of every month meeting. You don't have to register advance, you can just show up. We'll serve pizza. We got Gatorade. You get automatic entries into the raffle and we have a lot of fun. So as we kind of wind down here, I would encourage everyone here, you can now pull out your cell phones, text into our texting program so you can know when we're having events and stay informed with that. The parts that I'll share, we're two minutes over. I'm sorry for that, that
No problem, no problem.
We, we started out in 2020 with 22 members. We now have 74 members and every new event we do, more and more people, more families, more students are showing up. I want, how do I sign up? How do I be part of this? So even at Milbury Art and Wine, we had two people bring their paperwork and their checks. So I think we're up to 76 now. The fundraising that the Leos do, it's not just the fun days. They contributed $2,500 to rebuild the rec center. So they're recognized as visionary sponsors. They contributed to the Ukraine War Relief Fund for students. They do meaningful things. And what's different about this club is, yes, they're doing it for the right reasons, not for the recognition. It's nice that that comes. But the kinds of things they do, they understand these bigger concepts. They understand the difference they can make. They come to me and our other advisor, Councilwoman Ann Schneider and new lion, Angelina Cahalan. They come to us and say, Lion Michael, we've got an idea. We, we know about disrupting. We know about force multiplying. We know how to do things at scale. We want to execute that way. So this plastics program, yeah, 8,000 pounds here. But they've put together a program where they've mentored the Daisy Scouts and the Boy Scouts and the Peninsula Planet Savers Club and Milbury Anti-Racist Coalition and the Lions themselves. They're mentoring these other groups to do it too. So it scales and it's replicable and it's sustaining. And this is why they're recognized with an international award from LCI, Lions Club International, as one of the top 1% clubs in the world. There are 7,000 clubs. They're one of 70, only 13 in the U.S. This is our tiny little town of Milbury punching way over its weight class. Thank you, Leos, for everything you do. I'm really proud of you. We're happy to take any questions if anyone has any. But please do sign up for the text program. We'd love to have you come to that. You're welcome to sit in, be a visitor, or send students or kids. That would be great. Any questions of anyone?
Well, I know that, I know that each trustee wants to take a minute to just make a comment. We'll start down the end here with trustee Chin. Quick comment?
Well, it is so great to see you all here. It's great to see so much of the energy and enthusiasm that you all bring to the table. And I think you've really made community service fun. And I think that's most important. And it's clear that your membership has grown because you, you have made it cool. So I think that's amazing. And I'm really, really pleased about your plastics benches. I've sat on many of them and it was great to have a place to deposit my plastic. I'm a little bit sad that it's no longer here, so I'm hoping that it'll come back. But I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you do. You guys are role models and leaders in the community and you're an inspiration and you are the next generation for making the world a better place. So thank you.
Okay, trustee Ferrari.
Well, I just want to say how wonderful it is that you're learning so early on about giving back. And that's what it's all about, giving back to your community and volunteering. Because there's a special place in this world for, for those of you that volunteer. And it's a selfless, selfless activity, but you're all perfect examples of that. So I just commend you. And I just want to thank you all for your service. I mean, we thank many of our community sponsors, clubs for their service. But I think I'd like to publicly thank the Leos for your service too, not just Milbury, but to, to the world because you're doing just a great job. And like trustee Chin had mentioned, I'm just thrilled to death to have someplace to bring my plastic bags. It's just wonderful. I'm still saving. So thank you so much.
Trustee Faber. Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks so much for everything that you do. You know, you represent for me a renewal, a rebirth of volunteering in the community. And I think over the years, I've seen it ebb and flow and depending on what's going on in the world. But the Leos are always there. And it doesn't matter if we have COVID, if we've got worldwide poverty. It's you folks that step up and make our lives here in Milbury and around the area much better than they, they might have been. So thank you for that. I also want to mention, I am too old to be a Leo. But I did see The Lion King, so there's hope for me. Thanks so much. Trustee Musa.
All right, thank you. Now I know why my son got a haircut when he joined the Leos. There's something about haircuts and short hair. So thank you for letting me know about that. First of all, I want to say thank you, Michael Kelly, for your leadership. It's because of your leadership and your, your excitement about being, giving back to the community, you excited our children to join because I think the number just went up. And like one of you said, it's friends bringing friends. And this is the first time we've had so many kids join the Leos. And it's wonderful to see you guys at all the Milbury events. Everywhere I go, I see blue shirts, even at home. Anyway, yes. Anyway, so it's exciting to see you out there being part of the community because for a little Milbury, we have a lot going on. And to, to have you guys be part of it, and you, when you go to college and you come back, and this is your community, to continue doing the work. Because someday, you'll be sitting in our seats, running school boards, city councils, and we need you. So thank you, Michael, for teaching them the leadership. And again, take advantage of the situation because you're going to use that leadership when you go to college and on and beyond. But you will be back and come back in Milbury and serve your community. So thank you for all you do and have a great year.
Okay, Leos, I got to tell you that maybe some of you know, but some of you don't. I am Lion Frank. And I've been in the Lions Club since 2004. And I have to tell you that two of the things that we're most proud of, being in the Lions Club, is number one, having Michael Kelly as a Leo advisor to somebody who is such a leader, to lead our youth. He's exceptionally amazing. And just a little bit more, I'm just a little bit more prouder of the Leos. I really am. I really, sorry, Michael. I really, sorry, Michael. But I was the very first Leo advisor. And I still have the shirt, it's like a 3X, and it fits all the way down to my ankles. So I can't wear it, but I pull it out every once in a while and look at it. And I took a seat here on the school board and couldn't be a Leo advisor. So that was the giveaway, that I had to give it away. So I'm really sorry I had to do this, but you know, it's one of those things. But I'm so happy that you're here tonight. It was a great presentation. I look forward to seeing you around Millbrae, doing all the wonderful things that you guys do and girls do. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
While this is a school night, we'd love to stay, but SATs are this weekend, and there's lots of homework waiting for us. Thank you so much to the entire district for inviting us in. We're very proud to be part of Millbrae.
Okay, well, we have to move right along. We don't have cookies to give out, but too bad. We'll move it right along here. We have another presentation coming up. Thank you, Leos. Go after those SATs. Okay. We have the MEF here tonight. This is really my heart is throbbing. I can't wait to hear your presentation, Joy. Come on up and lead us in this great celebration here.
President Barbaro, I didn't know that you were going to have me follow, be after Michael Kelly and the Leos. That's huge. That's really hard for me to follow. But I also wanted to say before we started, a lot of our volunteers are here and they're coming in from work. So after the presentation, we have to bounce as well. Not that we don't want to spend time with you, but I want to make sure they're respectful of their time. So Board of Trustees, Superintendent French, Cabinet, thank you for having the Millbrae Education Foundation here this evening. We are proud to donate the Millbrae School District a grant of $545,500. And we are happy that the district will divide these funds accordingly into programs that benefit all our students. Reading, math, physical education, music, and social emotional learning. This grant would not have been possible without the generosity of our families, our local businesses, and our donors. Many families have struggled with job loss, death, and illness during this pandemic. But our community found a way to come together to give the district the second largest grant in our 15-year history. This grant would not have been possible without the partnership of our parent organizations from Lumita Park, Green Hills, Meadows, Spring Valley, and Taylor. Our dedicated unpaid volunteers come from all five schools. We invited people here today who have made the organization what it is, and everyone, I hope, knows who they are and remembers the legacy and the work put in. This year, we usher in many new leaders. And although I am personally saddened to leave, I know the MEF is in good hands. The work we started will continue on, and our new board will only make things better. Personally, I am very excited to be here this evening. In 2019 was the last time I was in these chambers, and I helped present the check. I had no idea that that year I would actually take over as president and now stand here before you giving this check. It has been an honor to work with all of you in this capacity. And I hope that the organization has grown. I know it has with all the people that I've met through volunteering with the MEF. I am not lying when I say it was one of the hardest volunteer jobs that I have had, but it's also been one of the most fulfilling. I've been able to work with Superintendent French in probably one of the most difficult times for both of us in our positions, but we made it through. And I think the only way we continue to push forward in our small community is to continue to collaborate and work together. I can't stress that enough. This is my last time to actually speak formally as the MEF president. So I want to say that collaboration, community, and putting the kids first is really what makes our community the best that it is. So thank you for having us, for having me, and everything that you have provided. So now the formal presentation of the check. I really apologize. It looks like a real check, it's not one of those hard ones. So if all of the volunteer, our board members and PTA presidents could come up, and then Superintendent French and all of our Board of Trustees, if you would come over and help hold this very heavy check.
Joy, would you like to announce anybody? No? I think they left already. No? Yeah, who are these people? Yeah, come on up and introduce yourself, come on.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Usha Ranji. I have two kids now at Mills and Taylor. And these past two years, I worked with Joy as one of the Vice Presidents for Operations at MEF. So thank you all so much for having us tonight. But I'm going to pass it on to one of our new Vice Presidents.
Hi, everyone. My name is, thank you, Usha. Usha is very important. I'm taking her place, actually, and so emailing her a lot. My name is Anshu Malaji. I'm a fifth grader and a kindergartner. And so I am one of the VPs for MEF, and I'm also one of the PTA Presidents for Green Hills. So double duty.
Hi, my name's Nicole Nishikawa. I am the PTA for Lumita Park this year. You'll probably hand me this microphone in the next year or two. I do not have a board position on MEF, but it's right around the corner. But for now, I'll just continue with my president duties at Lumita Park. But I am going to be part of the Lumita Park team. Our PTA team is working, looking forward to actually having a big hand in the gala this year with the decor. So we're, all of us work behind the scenes, so we're happy to be here and thank you for having us. I am site lead for Lumita Park. Like, we wear about a million different hats. Everybody does something.
Hi, my name is Louise Leann. I have a seventh grader at Taylor. I'm one of the new co-presidents for Taylor this year. I'm actually really, really new to the PTA thing, so I'm learning a lot this month. And everybody else here has been giving me a lot of advice. So I'm looking forward to have a great year. I'm so looking forward to the reset after the past of the pandemic. So I think this is a great year. We're going to start something new.
Hi, my name is Ling Wan. I am part of MEF for the past, what, three years? I have been the VP of School Sites. And this year, I'm also taking on treasurer role, which I'm struggling, but it's very important for our organization. I have two kids, one in Green Hill as a fourth grader, and then the other one just entered Taylor as a sixth grader. So they're loving those schools, and we're hoping that this year we can do more to help the community and help our schools. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vivian Wong. I'm a Meadows parent. I have a fourth grader and second grader there. This is my first year having a position with MEF, so I'm the site liaison between MEF and Meadows this year. And I also look forward to helping out with future parcel tax efforts as the Meadows site lead for that as well this year.
That's it?
Well, thank you all for all the work that you do. Yeah, good. Trustee Ferraria?
And Joy, before you leave, we want to congratulate you on being chosen as Millbrae's Person of the Year 2022.
Woman of the Year.
I always forget something, I always do.
Not a person, a woman of the year.
Well, I'm being correct.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to take a minute to, first of all, thank Joy. As always, just your gracefulness and just your spirit just radiates wherever you go. Even when you're, you know, exiting a position, you do it with such grace. And thank you so much. And this is such a fantastic gift that you presented to the district tonight. So thank you for your leadership and for your tenacity and for your partnership during, you're my COVID partner. So thank you so much for that. And I just want to thank all of our volunteers. So many of you, as Nicole said, you wear so many hats, and you're doing PTA, and you're doing site liaison, and you're holding positions on MEF, and you're raising children, and you're taking care of homes, and you're doing all those things. And we don't often tell you how much you're so deeply appreciated. And there's not a single thing that we could do with our children without your partnership. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all that you do. And we apologize if we don't thank you enough, because being at your events and seeing the work that goes into it and knowing the work that goes behind the scenes, you do that. You can only do that because you love it so much and because you're so committed to our community. So thank you for everything that you do in all of your roles in MEF and PTA and just in our schools. So thank you. We are profoundly grateful for all of you.
Just, I agree with everything our superintendent said, but I do want to acknowledge my friend, Joy Henry. Of all the years that I've known you, you're amazing. You are, you go above and beyond. I just want to acknowledge you that tonight. I know we were lucky to have you as a PTA and as a MEF. And now you're moving on to Mills, which is, you're still in Millbrae. But I just want to say, I mean, as a friend of mine, you're amazing. And we're lucky to have you as a volunteer in Millbrae. And so I just wanted to say, you know, come, stay around and help, we need you.
I don't think Joy is leaving that quickly. She is going to be our PTA Council President this year. So she is still very active here in Millbrae.
It's, that's Joy. She just doesn't know how to say no, but which is fine. We're okay with that. We'd love to keep you here and volunteering. So anyway, I just wanted to say that. You're amazing. And one quick question, when is the gala date? Do you have one? February, okay. Okay, same location? Okay, got it, thank you.
Well, 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 my MEF friends, thank you so much for everything you do for us. And I think the most important thing that you bring is the modeling for your children. When your children see how much time and effort you give to their community, it not only makes them into better citizens down the road, but it gives them a real model of what volunteerism means. And volunteering in the schools is so much more important than anyone can realize. So thank you for that. And I'll say it simply, without you, we could not do this. We could not do this. So God bless you and thank you so much. Well, one last word. I've known you for a couple of years, and I just so admire your leadership and the way you connect with everyone. Everybody really respects you, and everybody wants to really do anything you tell them to do or ask them to do. So I see that. I saw you in action many times, and I'm just amazed with your leadership. I'm so blessed, we're all so blessed to have people like you in our district that really step up for our kids and our families. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And we'll be seeing a lot of you, I'm sure of it. And we definitely are all coming to your dinner to honor you. I can't wait. So thank you, thank you. Karen?
I can't say enough. I mean, everybody has expressed so many great words. And Joy, yes, you are amazing to raise, you know, over a half a million dollars in this type of environment is truly a testament to your leadership and a testament to the strength of this community and all of the volunteers. I know so many of you have put in countless hours, you know, have asked for, you know, a lot, made a lot of sacrifices with your family time. And the appreciation can't be expressed enough in this room and the impact that you all had with all of your activities. I mean, everything, all those funds really go to paying for so many fantastic programs for our students, and we could not do it without the MEF and Joy, your leadership, and all of the efforts of the entire team. So thank you. I, no words can express that enough.
And it looks like we have an MEF founder here in the audience that just walked in. You snuck in here, I didn't see you come in. But Wayne Lee, stand up, Wayne. He's one of our founders of the MEF. Yeah, go ahead, grab it.
I'm just so pleased to be associated with MEF anymore. When we first started, it was just, I wouldn't say it was easy, but I would have to say that as, you know, each stage, there's persons at the right time, at the right stage. So all of you volunteers, as Joy knows, as the leader, yes, Joy, you get a lot of credit. And, you know, we all appreciate what you do. But Joy knows that it's not possible without the volunteers, without the support of the community, without the parents' dedication. So, you know, as a founder, that's what it took. It took the support of the whole community. It wasn't just myself or anybody else. So I just wanted to congratulate all of you, all the parents. And I think that this is fantastic, because when we first started, we only raised $80,000. So just, you know, at this time, I am just so proud to be associated. I can't take any credit for it, but I can just say that I'm very proud to be associated. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to move right on with our agenda. We'll give everyone a couple of seconds to get out. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Public comments. Speakers wishing to address the board on items on the agenda may complete speaker cards and submit them to the board secretary. Speakers addressing specific items on the agenda will have the opportunity to address the board on the time of the agenda items in the meeting. If you're addressing the board on a non-agenda item, please be aware that the provisions of the Brown Act prohibit the board from acting or discussing such matters at this meeting. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, per topic. Trustee communication. We have one comment. Okay. I just threw you right under the bus over there.
Daniel Yang. Thank you for being here.
Hello? You can hear me. Thank you for taking my comment. I want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I want to bring your attention to, I think, the plight of my family. And I know at least four other families with this plight. I have a third grader at Spring Valley. And right now, I have a kindergartner at Meadows. Both are great schools. We love both schools. The trouble is, they are on opposite sides of Millbrae. We are zoned for... We are zoned for Meadows. We, however, we asked for transfer to Spring Valley in the beginning with, when our son, a third grader, started at, in kindergarten because we could actually walk from our house to Spring Valley. We cannot do that to Meadows. And we were, at the time, we were told that our, his younger brother would be able to join him. So to our surprise, that we were not able to put in both in the same school. So now our family are in two different schools. So, and we also learned that there are at least four other families, because we're number five right now. And we learned also that Spring Valley, as opposed to previous years, having three kindergarten classes is now down to two. If you have five, at least five families asking for that transfer and they have registered to be such, that should be part of the capacity planning. And we're very disappointed, but we're still hopeful that, yeah, this may still happen. He's doing well. The kindergarten is doing well. But he is starting, as of this Friday, starting his intervention program, which the school lets out at 2:30. The third grader is let out at 2:30 at Spring Valley. We have to make a choice. Who are we going to pick up late? We have one car. We're hoping that we could walk our kids. And so that puts us in a very difficult position. And I know that our values are really, really important to the well-being of our kids. Community, continuity, family. His missus, like, he was having a hard time. The kindergarten is having a hard time because his brother is not at the same school he is. Continuity. We also heard a rumor that the transfer application has to be reviewed every single year and, you know, the next grade is not guaranteed. Our third grader has been at Spring Valley since kindergarten. He made a lot of friends. We made a lot of friends. He knows his, you know, his community. To have that instability, to think that he may be in a, in a different school the following year, it's, it's very hard on any family or any kids. That does not create stability. And it will continue it. Community. We build a community there and we wish.
Sorry, your three minutes is up.
And I, what I am asking is for the district to take into account all the transfer families in their capacity planning. And, you know, I know that there's things going on to formalize some of these policies, to make, take families into account. This is hard on the families. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other blue slips, we'll go right to trustee communication. Yes, Lynn?
I just wanted to have a moment of silence for the husband of one of our longtime teachers here in Millbrae, Karen McNulty. She was a teacher at Meadows and she was a teacher at Taylor as well. And her husband recently passed away. So I just wanted to have a moment of silence in their honor.
Thank you.
We have any other trustees want to make a comment before we move on?
I just want to, I just want to say on behalf of the Lions that we are looking forward to the golf tournament on the 19th. So I know we have maxed out our golfers for the day, but we have few seats left for dinner. So please get your tickets soon. Otherwise, it's going to be booked. So I know we got an invitation as a school board to attend that dinner. So I'm not sure if anybody received it. So we need probably RSV if we're going to dinner. Any, like, board members or cabinet are interested in going to dinner. I just wanted to, to RSVP soon before they, kind of, the seats are starting to. Awesome. Thank you. Yeah. The 19th? It's that Monday. So, yeah, I'll be there all day helping out. I think so too, but they got to make sure their works is being taken care of at the office.
They're sold out. They have no spots. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments, Dennis?
Sure. I'm happy to be back in the city hall chambers for the first time since, I think, 1987. It was a long time ago. But it just, it's refreshing and reminding me of what normal used to look like. And so I hope we never have to go back to anything else. So thank you for being here, my friends.
Karen? You're passing? Okay, I'll move on with the agenda. I'm good. I said everything I wanted to say. Okay. Now, I normally pass on this next one.
I know.
But I really doubly, I double whammy highlighted it. So superintendent's update.
I'm going to keep it short tonight. I want to thank, first of all, Michael Kelly and the Leos for being here tonight. It's fascinating to see what they're doing and just the commitment that they have at such a young age, not only to philanthropy, but to one another. Like, you could feel their commitment to each other and to their, and to their group. And I love that they love to have fun. So I've, I've already subscribed to theirs so we can keep up on what they're doing. Hopefully, we can get them more integrated into our district so that our, when our kids get to Taylor, they're more aware. I also want to thank, I know we thanked MEF, but just one last time for MEF for the check and just their hard work that, all the work that led up to being able to write that check. It's amazing that during a pandemic, they raised the second largest amount of money that they've ever raised. I mean, that just is such a tribute to not only Joy and her leadership, but to the volunteers, each and every one of them, regardless of their position or, you know, how they volunteered. But also to the community for rallying and coming together at a time when, you know, what we thought would maybe bring a nation closer ended up being a bit divisive. And that didn't happen here in Millbrae and with MEF. So just wanted to say thank you once again. And then, of course, wanted to just talk about the school. Like, this is our first board meeting since school started. And we've had a fantastic start to school, not without its problems, of course. We've had a few challenges, but we've been able to overcome them. They are just opportunities for us to review, reflect, and do things better. And we have two principals in the audience tonight. We have Catherine Wassleff from Meadows and Carrie Dees from Green Hills. I want to thank them for their great start to the year. I've been able to attend the barbecue at Green Hills, which was a ton of fun. And I know that they're doing coffee with principals and all things are back. Just to echo what trustee Fama said, it just feels normal. There's activities and there's folks about and having a good time. So. But what I really wanted to highlight tonight, and I know Jeff is helping over here. So we have our ever-evolving, improving website. And you may remember that we rebuilt the website last, was it last year? Two years ago. And it's always a work in progress. And while our website is continuing to look better every day, much of that is credited to Jeff and his sharp eye and attention to detail. We are also really looking at other ways to expand so that it becomes a resource for folks. And one of the things that we've done that we wanted to highlight is our calendar. So in case you are not yet familiar with our calendar, you can go right up to the calendar. And then you go down to the district calendar. And on that calendar, you can see all the events that are occurring in our district. And so you just click on whichever one. So tonight's the school board. It's a school board meeting and then the contacts, so it's the location. And of course, the link to the, is that the link to the website? Okay. And so that's very similar to all the other events. Let's just choose something that's coming up at Meadows or Green Hills because they're here. So this is a PTO executive cabinet and general meeting, September 12th, 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And just an opportunity for everyone to kind of be able to see what's going on around the district. So tell a friend if you haven't found the calendar yet. And I know that Jeff is working hard to get people to subscribe to the calendar. Is that correct, Jeff? And so that information will be coming out so that we can get as many folks as possible to that calendar directly so they can check it on a regular basis so they don't miss anything. We also want to thank our PTAs, our MEF, and our principals because calendaring for one school isn't easy, but calendaring for an entire district is certainly not easy. And one of our goals this year is to ensure that we don't have any competing events. Because for, we could have families who have children at three schools. They have a TKer and then an elementary and a Taylor student, a middle school student. That's potentially three different schools. So we really are trying to make sure that when we have big festive events, that only one school at a time is having that. So parents and families don't have to make decisions about which one to attend or which one to leave early. And so I want to thank our PTAs for their flexibility as we do that and for Jeff in being essential and incredibly helpful in working with our PTAs as we are doing that. We also worked very hard today in Cabinet about developing a process for changing calendar dates so that everyone is aware. And I know that, I think that we rolled that out today to our principals and we're working with our PTAs. So again, this is just in continuing to evolve and just get better. And it's shown in a variety of ways, whoever people, you know, whatever's pleasing to the eye. And then one of the, are you able to show the link? The board meeting? So one of the other things that we, under the Board of Education, so instead of having to go into the agenda, you can actually, where do we find it now? In the agenda? Where you just replace it? Okay. So instead of having to go, to do multiple clicks to find the link for the board agenda, now you just go right here to that board agenda and the link for the meeting is there. And then you can just access the board agenda. I know that there was conversation that folks thought it was difficult to find. And sometimes we need to hear that because we, we do this every day. And so it's easy for us because it's second nature. But we want to make sure that we're making it as accessible as possible. Oh, you can't hear me? Sorry. So that is what we've done with our, with our board agenda link. We're trying to improve that accessibility for all of our community. And anything, oh, and then we are just going to show you that you can also go to each of our schools directly from the website. So not only can you see all the things that are occurring at the district, but you go right to the "Our Schools" tab and then pick a school. And we're going to pick Lamita Park. And that would take, that will take you directly to that school's website. So I know that our principals and our office assistants and whoever has been, you know, granted the opportunity to work on websites are working very hard to keep our school websites up to, up to speed as well. So again, we are paying close attention to our calendar, to our website in totality and are always looking for feedback and ways that we can improve it so that it becomes a friendly place to go and visit and learn about all the great things that are happening in Millbrae. Any questions on the website or the calendar?
Just have a comment.
Well, I had a little difficulty today.
I heard.
I, I know why you're having this presentation. I clicked on the board agenda and I got the agenda, but it was in Chinese. And so I clicked on the other URL at the bottom and it was another form of Chinese. So I couldn't read the agenda. So I called our director here and I said, hey, what's going on? And he said, I'll check it out. So I know that's why you're doing this right now.
It's actually planned, but it was helpful.
No, you kept, you kept turning around and looking at me the whole time.
I thought, because you'd be happy about the calendar.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to comment on that.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, we all are.
So Jeff, you have no idea how many years we have wanted a district calendar with events at all the schools. And I know it's important, as Debbie mentioned, about families who have students at, you know, all different schools to, you know, stay tuned on what's happening at each of their schools. But as the trustees up here, we like to make it to the events. And if we don't see them, you know, and it's printable, which is great because I'm kind of a paper person. So I just can't thank you enough for that. It's very user-friendly and good work. Thank you.
Great. It's great.
Yeah. And then I think for more to come, we're, we're going to let, you know, Jeff catch his breath here with everything with synergy and the calendar. But we really are looking to, we're not going to let him catch his breath? Okay. We really, and Jeff and I have been talking about this really since his arrival, in increasing our presence on social media. And so looking at our presence on Instagram, I think we made a decision to stay away from Twitter for a minute until all things Twitter kind of resolve themselves. But Facebook and even, you know, word, word has it if we did other things, you know, my, my children who are much older say, mommy, you guys would be the coolest school district if you, like, did these kinds of things. So I have to learn it first and then maybe we can do it. But. Yeah, TikTok, TikTok dances. And how fun would that be? Cabinet dances? Anyways, it would be fun. But we're not there yet. But we really are looking to increase our presence on Instagram and Facebook. We do believe that that would be really important, just getting out. You know, we walk schools all the time. We see great things happening. To be able to send out photographs just like on the spur of the moment is, is really fantastic. So looking for ways to increase our presence in, in every arena possible. And I just want to thank Jeff for his hard work because he's doing, has a lot of balls in the air and continues to, to just tick those things off his list one at a time. And that's it tonight. I just really wanted to highlight the calendar in a way for, place, place for folks to go to see what's going on in our school district.
Okay, well, we'll move right along here. We're going to move right along to the consent agenda. This is an action item. Do I have a motion to approve the consent? Trustee Fama? Trustee Musa? Trustee Fama makes the, the motion? And trustee Musa seconds it? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving right along here. District business. Resolution 222303, authorize signatures.
Thank you, President Barrow. This is a, just a resolution that allows us to add Claudia to our signatures so she could be a signator for the district in case of absence by either Ralph, myself, or I believe Claudia. She would be an additional signator on our account.
Okay. Okay, this is an action item. Do I have a motion? Trustee Floria made the motion. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Chin. Any discussion, questions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Discussion item, CLSBA and... Am I going to say this right? Abisma?
Yes.
It's Abisma?
Apisma.
Apisma, okay.
Yes. Thank you, President Barrow. You may remember, trustees, that we had this discussion at our last board meeting. And we indicated that we would bring this back for a final, potentially, discussion and action. Last time it was a discussion. So I have provided you with some information regarding CLSBA. Stands for California Latino School Board Association. It is an arm of CSBA, California School Boards Association. And Apisma is also not necessarily directly affiliated with CSBA, but is recognized by CSBA, actually does a lot of joint work with CSBA. And this is in regards to our Asian Pacific Islander students. So these are kind of arms of CSBA that districts can make a decision to join and participate in meetings and speakers and hearing about, you know, best practice and research and interaction with folks who are doing, you know, serving same types of demographics within their organization. And that is what is before you tonight, just to make a decision on whether or not we would like to join these two, I won't say organizations, but these two components of CSBA.
Okay. Any comments?
I have a quick question. Do we need to join both or are we choosing one or the other?
You don't, you don't need to join both. You can make a decision on, why don't we do this? Why don't you take a motion and a second? Because we're going to act on this. So I'm going to have you take a motion and a second and then we can do discussion.
Okay. So do I have a motion to have a discussion on this matter? Okay, trustee Chin made the motion. Okay, trustee Chin made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Fama made the second. Okay, all in favor?
Any discussion?
Any questions? Discussion? Oh, okay. Discussion.
So to trustee Musa's point, no, you don't have to join either. You can join both, or you can join one. That's entirely up to the board. The requirement is that we pay the fee, and then it provides you opportunity to attend meetings and interact with colleagues who are in the same organizations.
I have one. I'm wondering how much, or to what extent, these organizations represent the students that we serve here. And the other question I had was whether we can identify, quantify the benefit to our student community, to our school district, by joining these organizations, without, without passing judgment on either. I don't know much about either one, but there are unlimited numbers of organizations that represent different components of the cultural issues that face school districts today. And I know we cannot probably, we probably don't want to join everything. So is there anything significant about these two organizations that would be different from other organizations approaching us?
So, those are all fantastic questions. I, again, some of them I can answer very specific based on my personal experience. I am a member of CLSBA. I was a member in my previous superintendency. I think I've shared with the board that I served in a demographic that was about 98% Latino. And so obviously, we were a member of California Latino School Boards Association. I think the benefit there was, that was a demographic that was, it was a primary demographic in our district. And so it was really important to stay on top of things like legislation that may be impacting our students. Curriculum adoptions that necessarily haven't happened yet, but maybe like are up for discussion. So it's kind of a window into what may be coming to the school districts, or even to, you know, governing, any governing body, either in cities or in, in schools, as far as how we serve demographics within our, within our district. I've personally attended quite a few events with CLSBA, which were associated with CSBA. And I don't think that it was anything necessarily that I didn't hear in CSBA, because CSBA is very conscientious about the work of demographics and making sure that there is kind of something for everyone as they do their teachings. I think with the only distinction is that these groups, these affiliations are much more specific in the information that they share, in the legislation, legislation that they share, and sort of the priming of ensuring that you are aware of kind of the hot issues in the demographics. I think they do it a little bit more precisely than CSBA can, because CSBA is ensuring that there's attention to all demographics across the state.
Thanks for saying that, because we are members of CSBA. And when you go to conferences, they, it's open, all Asian Pacific Islands, all kinds of legislation, they're part of every decision that's made. So since we're part of the CSBA, and they do touch on upon the same, so is it wise to just stay with CSBA and just be, be present at what the, when they have those topics, you know, dinners or, you know, conferences, that we, we have the option to join, correct? So, because I would be more geared to the CSBA, because I think they're more state, they go directly to the state, and they negotiate for what's best for kids, right? And curriculum?
Definitely.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, 100%. Yes, definitely. Do know that if there's a decision tonight to join one or both of, or none of the organizations, you still are a member of CSBA. So that doesn't go away. As board members and as cabinet, we are members of, I think cabinet or myself. I think it's all cabinet, okay. Are members of CSBA. That won't go away, even if the decision is to say, "Let's join CLSBA." So what that would look like is if you were to go to, you know, CSBA has an annual conference, and at that conference, typically what happens is CLSBA will host its own mini-conference within the conference. And typically, that looks like a lunch or a dinner, and it's a working lunch or a dinner where they bring in speakers. So they don't typically hold their, a separate conference, they find ways to embed that into the conferences that already exist. So like when I go to superintendent symposium, CLSBA, Apisma, Association for African American Students, all of those kind of tentacles are there, you just make decisions about whether or not. Now, the overarching component of that is, yes, CSBA does have a responsibility to touch on all of those subjects, but they just don't do it with the depth that the individualized affiliations can do, because they just, they have to be, you know, it's about equality to all demographics, right? Where this, these, these organizations are working with simply one. So if you have a piece of legislation that's coming down, for CLSBA as an example, you may learn in your CSBA governance workshops that that's happening, but at like your CLSBA lunch, there'll be like in-depth conversation about it. Someone will present on the pros and the cons, so it's just, that's kind of the, that was my major distinction that I found.
Can you just review what the cost is of membership? Because it's my understanding that we're talking about $100 a year for the whole board and the school district for Apisma, and only like $250 a year for CSLB, for CLSBA?
So I know for Apisma, well, let me say that, I know Claudia's looking up, and I apologize, I don't, I, I left my notes in my office. See? I got to get used to this.
We have time.
Yeah, I can run over there really quick. I do believe that Apisma is $100 for the membership and annual memberships.
Right.
Pay that on top of the CSBA membership. And then I do think CLSBA was either $225 or $250. And again, that's inclusive of the board. It's, it's
Yeah, that's the entire school district.
Not individual board members.
Correct.
Yes.
So, I mean, just a comment, I mean, I think, given the demographics of our school, our commitment to having an inclusive and a belonging school climate, the desire and commitment that we have to equity, the work that we're doing with the Anti-Defamation League, and No Place For Hate, to me, this is a very small expense for us to have an additional opportunity at the preeminent sort of School Board Association groups that actually talk about what may be facing certain demographic groups that are very representative of the percentage of students in our district. I think it's totally valuable, you can attend or you cannot attend. You're also, I think, given access to additional information throughout the year, helps you understand more of the demographic, how we can be better serving these students, it helps with advocacy in certain areas. I'm not sure I see any disadvantage in joining. That's just my, my personal comment.
Karen, would you like to make a motion?
I think the motion's on the table.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
To join both?
Trustee Chin made the motion. Was your motion to join both?
Oh, yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve joining both CLSBA and Apisma.
Question, do we have one or two trustees that they're on like a committee that will attend these meetings, or?
There's no requirement for that.
Could we all go if we want to?
100%. You can't, yes. It's, you can go as long as they're hosting the event, and you're going in the format of a governance training.
Where's this, both organizations, where are they?
They're Sacramento, they come out of Sacramento with CSBA. So the, the information comes via email, so you often will get updates from CSBA. Now, if, in fact, you join these organizations, you'll get these same updates from CLSBA and Apisma. And then there'll be, if, they have mixers, right? Like CLSBA has mixers, and you'll get invitations to that, to be invited to attend those. Or you can attend specialized lunches and dinners at CSBA workshops and governance trainings. There isn't any requirement. Apisma does, is a little bit more, they do have a preference that superintendents get a little bit more actively involved, as well as a board member or two, because they do a lot of legislative work. They do a lot of lobbying. CLSBA is similar, but I think it's a, it's, in California, it's a lot larger, so they kind of have their embedded lobbyists within their organization already. So, but none of it is a requirement. It's not required that you attend like one meeting a month or anything. It's optional for the attendance.
Okay. We need a second?
You need a second, if you're done asking questions.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Second? Okay, we have a, a first and a second. Any more discussion at all? No, we're all good to go? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do want to say though, that we are part of the San Mateo CSBA.
Yes.
And those meetings, we have a new president, and those meetings, and, and they do have more local government and topics that we meet monthly, and we, they have mixers and dinners, now everything's back in person. So I do, we do have that more of a, more of a close-up opportunity for us to be part of the San Mateo CSBA. I think that would be more effective, working with our own county superintendent in San Mateo, that we could be, we can engage in conversations, have dinners for our school boards locally in San Mateo County. And I think that just brings it more home, more locally, than just being more broad as a California state. So, because we, we would have more of a say of what kind of topics we want to discuss as a San Mateo County, so.
Right. And what Superintendent French mentioned is the fact that there, there's, there can be one or two board members that respond, like Maggie has been our representative on CSBA on a lot of issues, which has been wonderful, because she's filled us in on. And so if we wanted to have one or two trustees be more involved, or give us an update on some of the, the things that are happening, we can certainly go that route.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Karen?
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Passionate about this. But really, I mean, would you please be a, be a, you know?
I'd be happy to be a trustee on, to represent for both those groups, and would welcome other board members to join me. There are also local Apisma and likely CLSBA group meetings as well. So the local chapters will get together and have discussions about things that may affect folks in San Mateo County, Santa Clara County, the Bay Area.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Karen.
And I always feel a need to give a plug for CSBA, because legislatively, like, they are a dynamo, and much of what we learn on a daily basis about what's happening in our state comes from CSBA. They do really try hard to give it in a non-bias opinion. I would say between CSBA and school services, like, we just, we get updates, I get updates almost daily. And so, San Mateo County, I do have to say, it's very exciting, very active county with CSBA. Not all counties are like that. And County of San, San Mateo actually hosts an event at CSBA. So it was really fun last year to be at CSBA, to be with all the folks from San Mateo County. So I do, I do urge you to get involved with that county component, because there's, you learn a lot about what's happening before it happens.
So, possible future gen items? We have nothing? Okay, yeah, whoop, whoop, whoop.
There are two things. I noticed that last week there was a disturbance at a school board meeting in Santa Clara County, and it was the organization QAnon. And they, apparently, one of the strategies that that organization has is not to go to city councils anymore, but to show up at school district meetings. And so it just tickled my memory, you know, we really should take a look at what our, our policies and procedures are, in case there should be a disruption at one of our meetings. I don't anticipate it, I have no knowledge of anything happening, but it might be good just to review. We have a police department right next to us, of course, but, you know, let's take a look at our policies and make sure that we're, we're in good stead.
I think that becomes part of our emergency plan, and I know that Jeff is, and our committee is working, and cabinet is working really, really hard on that. Principals, huge input. So certainly, we can report back in next month, I mean, not next month, but next board meeting, about that. It's actually a, a big topic of conversation right now with CSBA, because of all of the disturbances that have been occurring at board meetings. So we will definitely look into that from the perspective of what's our plan, in the hopes and in almost the knowing that it won't happen, but just to make sure that we're prepared.
So the governor signed a bill a few days ago, and regarding that, regarding what's been happening since the pandemic, there's been a lot of disturbances at board meetings. So the governor, with his bill, and it's from the CSBA, again, so if there, we do have someone that comes in to disturb the meeting or becomes very uncontrollable, we have the right to kick them out of the, the board meeting. So they're not allowed, we are allowed to take action and, and, you know, take them out of our meetings. So, so there's the bill, if you want to, it's on the CSBA. I, you know, like you said, we get the daily updates. So it's on there, if you want to read it through, but, but I'm sure we, we should have our own, part of our safety policy, because, you know, it got, sometimes it goes beyond just comments, it's about threats, and they come to your home and all this stuff. So that we do, should have a protocol in case, in case something happens.
I would just recommend to the board, and we can certainly do the footwork on this and bring it back. I unfortunately had to do this in LA, but the, the piece that the president reads before public comments, we would need to revamp to include, like, removal of somebody who is, who acts in a certain way. And just those, just that verbiage that is in that statement is very helpful. It's kind of like gates around the schools, right? It's, it's a deterrent for folks to do that. And that they will be held liable for what they say about specific people or make threats. So we can work with CSBA in getting that language. It's not a board, it's not a policy. It's just a snippet of information that goes into our agenda. So we'll work on that.
I'd like to nominate Frank to be the sergeant-at-arms.
Yes. Okay. I was thinking Christina.
Yeah. We'll have plans in the audience. The other thing is, for myself, you know, I've been on the board 10 years, and I'm hoping to continue. And I'd like to see a presentation or listing of what kind of board trainings are available for board members, because I haven't been to a board training since I started. And I know there's a lot of great programs, and, and I would encourage all of us to take a look and see if we need a refresher. We always get stuff on the Brown Act, and I've become an expert in that. But there's so many more things that have happened over the years, that if we could just review what's, what's out there, and we can make our own decisions about what we'd like to, to look.
Certainly, we can do that. We can provide that to you in an update. And then again, I'll just, another flag, CSBA conference.
Actually, San Mateo CS, San Mateo CSBA, they usually have training for new trustees in November.
Yes.
So Karen, we'll probably get, as a new trustee.
And then there's master, masters.
And then there's masters in governance. It's all CSBA.
People think that masters in governance is like for a new board member, but it really is pretty, pretty phenomenal to do it as a refresher. It's in actual, actual classes. So, but we'll put together a comprehensive list, both locally and with CSBA, the state CSBA, and then let you know what those options are.
There is one for the president.
Yes, there's one for presidents, there's
I never went, but, yeah, I did go.
Yes.
I went twice.
For new board members, for existing board members, like trustee Fama just said, someone who's maybe been on the board for a minute, wants to have a little bit of a refresher. So we'll give you a little snippet of what they are, and, or the titles, and then what, who they serve best.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments before we approve the adjournment? Any other comments? Seeing none? A motion to approve the adjournment? Motion by trustee Fama, second by trustee
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lynn, I'm sorry that you were down on